Welcome to our regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I'll call this city council meeting to order. And as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you can see, we have some rearrangement of chairs. For those of you that are watching and stuff like that, we actually have our Parks and Rec Director Laura Colbert, who is handling the clerk duties tonight. And then we have Justin Behrendt, who is our interim city administrator on my left instead of in their normal seats tonight. So just a little bit of a rearrangement. With that, I'll ask Laura to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Lauren. Can you take role for us too?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Eric Holverson.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Paul Mayu.
Here.
Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Henry Vallaker.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Laura. And you want to start the introductions of the department heads too?
You bet. Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Justin Behrendt, Director of Public Works.
Eric Bailey, Library Director. Pete Crager, Chief of Police.
And as I said before, so Barb is gone tonight. She has a granddaughter that's eighth grade recognition. And Stephanie is the same, has a child that's graduating from eighth grade. And Josh is here. Yeah, and Josh is in the back. So, all right. Let's go to the consent agenda. This is where we take all of those items that are on your agenda with one motion, unless you see something on there that you would like to see moved to the regular agenda. If there are none, we would like to hear approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dykstra, to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under the regular agenda, we have one thing we have. Laura handed out invitation to you for the Shine, celebrate a shine down in Rotary Park. Want to say anything on that? No?
It was a giant collaborative effort between the Wisconsin Community Arts Board, the Rotarians who are part of that park, the Foundry who built the sculptures, designed and built sculptures, and then Falks who came and dug the holes and finished the groundwork. And then Josh and myself from Parks and Rec. So we are really excited that it's finally come to fruition and can't wait for the opening ceremony, which is on the 26th.
Go down there on a sunny day. It's really kind of cool. And then also, we had a handout from, you'll see the, from IPA on there. And this is the conditional offer that we're going to discuss tonight with our recommendations for the economic development position. And that's later in the agenda. But you have that in paper form on your desk tonight. Under, okay, so we need a motion to approve the regular agenda then. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Go ahead, Colin.
Mayor, what item number is the discussion of this under?
Who are you talking about?
The Innovative Public Advisors. Is there an agenda item for that?
Yeah, it's C1.
Okay, all right. I didn't understand it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. I should have explained myself better. Okay, any other? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under non-agenda items, we have a proclamation from the Wapaka Community Media Day, which Justin had up on the screen. There it is, on the screen. And Wayne is here. Wayne Nuts, 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 Litzler is here tonight. You want to say something to us, Wayne? Can you, can you come and sit in Stephanie's seat? Or stand up, whichever, yeah, works better for you.
You're a radio guy. You should be using the mic all the time.
We have a big celebration in progress this week. It's, well, it's a 50-year celebration of Wapaka media. Forty years ago, WinTV started. Ten years ago, Wapaka Radio started. You put those together, that's 50 years. That sounds more impressive than 40. I call it strategic entertainment wording. We did Winchester Academy last night. Tomorrow is the third anniversary of the Good News Wapaka Talk Show. And then on Thursday, you're definitely all invited. We're doing a 10th Birthday Bash at the historic ICC. It is free to attend with goodwill donations and 50/50 raffle money going to the vets home in King. Entertainment from Elvis John, Cloud Nine Fire Show. Jim King, yours truly will be hosting. Elliot from Iowa will also be on hand with tickets to the Iowa Car Show. And we thank you for this proclamation.
Thanks, Wayne. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. At this time, Wapaka Community Media Day proclamation. Whereas community media organizations serve as an invaluable resource to inform, educate, and engage the public, providing the platform for all voices, including underserved populations. And whereas the community media plays a vital role in ensuring transparency, fostering public discourse, and empowering citizens with the knowledge and tools to participate in civic life. And whereas public access television, local radio, and digital media platforms offer opportunities for local content creation and broadcast, helping to preserve cultural identity and history while promoting free speech and diversity of opinion. And whereas community media encourages individuals to become active participants in media creation, fostering media literacy and developing the skills needed to share stories that reflect the unique character and concerns of our city. Whereas June 4th, 2025, has been chosen to recognize and celebrate the significance of Wapaka Radio FM 96.3, WinTV, and the Chain Domain Podcast, highlighting their positive impact in connecting communities, enhancing local engagement, and serving as a resource for education and creativity. Whereas the City of Wapaka acknowledges and appreciates the dedicated work of Wapaka media employees and volunteers for the role they play in amplifying local voices and fostering a sense of community. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of City of Wapaka, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2025, as Wapaka Community Media Day, and encourage all residents to recognize the contributions of community media to our society, participate in local media initiatives, and support the ongoing development of community-based media. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wapaka to be affixed on the 3rd of June, 2025. So, thanks, Wayne, and we certainly appreciate all your efforts.
One last thing, best for last. Tip of the hat to the Wapaka area public library and their exhibit team, Liz Kinnear and friends. There's a wonderful exhibit in the lobby between the library and City Hall, and I invite everybody to take a look at that as well. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Wayne. Appreciate that. All right, next up, we're full in our audience tonight, so I know we'll get a lot of this. But we have public input. If there's anybody that would like to talk to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Counselor staff, any non-agenda items? All right, we'll move on then to unfinished business. We have ordinance number 022025. This is an ordinance amending 17.102 of the zoning district maps as allowed for under 17.7. And this is the second reading. Justin, you want to take this?
Sure. So second reading, we've already seen this at the last council meeting. There are two properties on Leighton Road that we're requesting or recommending this rezone. If you remember, this is a split zoning issue. So the two vacant lots are split with a recreation zoning and a R1, which is residential. There is the desire from some private individuals to build houses on these lots. And where the recreation and the residential line up, it's just way too restrictive to build a, I guess, a house to our standards or what we would make follow our building code. So we are recommending to rezone this to get rid of that recreation and allow the development of single-family homes. So it'd be rezoned to R1 and eliminate the dual zone.
Did we have any comments from the public, you know, Justin?
I am not aware of any. I take that back. I got one phone call today from a neighbor who just had a question of what does this mean? And that was about it.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions? Anybody want to make a motion to approve ordinance 022025?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 022025.
Second.
Motion by Vallaker, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve ordinance number 022025. Any further discussion? Laura, color roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Holverson.
Aye.
Henry Vallaker.
Aye.
Paul Mayu.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Scott Peterson. Or Scott, Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Pritchatsky.
Ten ayes, motion carries.
I don't even have anything funny to say over that one. That was funny by itself. All right, under new business, this is, we're bringing forward, or I'm bringing forward, recommendation to hire Juliana Stoles as our new Community and Economic Development Director position. And I know that Jay is on with us tonight on Teams. I think, is he on?
I do not see anybody.
Yeah, he was supposed to be on. That's okay, though. I mean.
You want me to read this letter?
Yeah, if, let me just set this up for you real quick. We had three individuals that were, well, first of all, the interview panel was myself, Justin, and Jay Shamble. And then also, our new city administrator was here on that Friday meeting with Aaron. So he sat in on the interview process too, so he got a chance to do the interviews too. We interviewed three people. Two of them were good. A little different, they were each, the two that we thought were good, they were, they were, economic development is a, is a big department as far as their job duties and stuff like that. And one had more expertise in one area and the other one had more expertise in the other. But we felt like Juliana was the, Juliana was the best candidate for that. I do have to tell you that, I'm sorry about this, but we are trying to get this passed so that we can get her here by June 23rd. So I didn't want to wait till the second meeting in June or have a special meeting. But she is unable to attend tonight, even by Teams. But she did write, well, so Jay helped us with the, her introduction. You can see on your, on your desk, you have the offer that we gave to her. You can also see her resume that's on there. And what else do we have, Justin?
The letter from Juliana is that third page that Jay was going to read. And I see, I got an email from him saying there are some technical difficulties on his end, so.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to stubble through trying to get him on right now, or.
I think it's okay if you read what he wrote, if that's okay?
Sure. So this is from a letter from Juliana to the IPA people, Jay Shamble. "I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve as the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Wapaka. It is an incredible honor to join your team and work alongside such dedicated leaders in shaping the future of this community. I'm truly inspired by the city's commitment to fostering growth while preserving the unique character that makes Wapaka such a special place. Your trust in my abilities is both humbling and motivating. Look forward to bringing my skills, experience, and enthusiasm to advance the city's goals and priorities. Thank you once again for this opportunity. I'm eager to begin contributing to building a vibrant future for Wapaka, and I welcome your guidance and partnership."
Okay, yeah, that was, that was nice. We, again, like I said, we had two good candidates. Juliana was, actually, her strength is in economic development area. And so we felt that that was our, our number one need in that department. The rest of it, we can hopefully have her work through the process with the employees that we have here. I don't know if you have any, let me tell you this too. As I said with our city when we hired Josh Finch, if you feel uncomfortable with approving my recommendation tonight, we can always have a special meeting, which we would probably try and set up yet this week. But I'm just giving you that option if that's something that you want to do. I don't know, Justin, do you have anything to offer as far as the interview part of it?
Well, she was, obviously, we thought the number one candidate. We thought the things that shown from the interview was like her character, very intelligent, very approachable, seemed like a problem solver. And we thought that was going to be a huge match as far as the development side of the position. So zoning side is not strong in her background. But however, we do have solid staff here, and we feel like with her intelligence level, she will be quick to catch on.
She, I mean, even though she's moving from Washington DC, she is originally from Wisconsin. So she's, again, trying to get back closer to home type thing. I think you could see in her resume that she did work for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, which we at one time. So again, we thought that was a big plus for us also. I don't know, I don't have anything else to add unless you have some questions you want to ask? Anybody? Anyone want to make a motion to approve my Mayor Smith's appointment of Juliana Stoles?
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Juliana Stoles for Economic Development Director.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Vallaker, that we approve the appointment of Juliana Stoles to the Community and Economic Development Director's position. Any further discussion?
Per the conditional offer, right?
Yeah, the conditional, yeah, for the conditional offer. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Are we allowed to ask questions about the offer in open session?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
This is different than the city administrator's position.
So, yeah, we felt that we could do anything and all that.
Do you have a max on the relocation reimbursement?
We don't.
Okay.
We don't. We can tell you the offer that was given her is at the top of our pay scale. So, I mean, I mean, that's exactly at the top of the pay scale for that position.
Well, I think it's a good balance. And of course, she accepted it. It's just a one-time cost because what, I think 113 is what she was making. So, you know, it's $25,000 less. So I, I mean, to get her and be able to, it, I can't believe a relocation would be over $25,000, would it?
No.
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 So I think in the end, we still come out financially okay. And then she's willing to come here, you know, for less money. Again, our cost of living is going to be probably significantly less than DC.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any, like, for other things we've provided, for instance, maybe Justin's education and other education things we fronted, there were rules that were established relating to an amount of time they had to be with the community before they could leave. And if they left early, they'd have to pay any of it back. Is anything established like that for this?
We, we don't have anything that, that we feel that she needs to qualify for, so the answer is no.
Okay.
There. Yeah, I mean, we are paying for relocation, you know, so we're hoping that she stays quite a long while, obviously. Yeah. Anybody else? I think you'll really like her. I really do. So, if there's no other questions, I'll have Laura call roll.
Paul Mayu.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Vallaker.
Aye.
Eric Holverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carries.
Awesome. If you are going to just leave these here, you want to pass them back this way? If you want to take them home with you, you can certainly take them home with you.
I might keep it.
Okay, next up, this is under new business. And this is a resolution number 1576. Actually, it's 1577.
You, no, 76.
I'm looking at the resolution, though. So does that need to be changed?
No, because the 76 never made it into the original packet. So, so item number C2, 1576, resolution renaming Harriet Street, never made in the original packet and then was added to the website after the fact.
So it is 1576.
Yeah, I have it. Oh, I see what you're saying. There is a.
We could fix it.
There's a typo on the.
What is the resolution for the next one?
77.
Okay, so, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, yeah.
So what was downloaded, it's, this has to do with the renaming of Harriet Street. That actually should be resolution number 1576. And we'll make sure that Barb corrects that. If you remember, Lakewood Field has been, we've, there's been a lot of, a lot of work that's been done at Lakewood, Lakewood Field through a lot of donations and so on. And we, we named a couple of streets last year. One Cronkway and the other one was Hobbit Corn Court or so on. We had one street left that we knew that we wanted to rename at a future date. And, you know, with, to me, it seemed like this was the appropriate time to do that. So we are going to name, rename Harriet Street, with your approval, of course, rename Harriet Street to Peterson Street. And the resolution does talk about that. And I know Dave is humble through this whole process, but well-deserving. And if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. I can tell you, if you do approve this tonight, the Lakewood, every other year, have an old-timers game, and that's scheduled for in July, late July. And we will actually rename, actually put up the street signs and have a presentation that night, similar to what we did when, when, last year at this time, too. I guess that was also when we dedicated the Public Works Building, too. So a lot of things going on there. But let me go ahead and read the resolution, and then I'll ask for a motion on this. Whereas Dave Peterson has been a pillar of the Wapaka community, dedicating his life of public service, athletics, and leadership, and proudly serving the City of Wapaka as a city council member for the past 11 years. And whereas Pete's lifelong commitment to the Wapaka Lakewood Baseball Club began in 1965, when he played one year before pausing his playing days due to being drafted by the US Army during the Vietnam War. And where, as a player, Pete earned a place in the Lakewood's records book, including the, including the, leading the team in home runs, 11 in 1977, hits, 51 in 1980, batting average, 477 in 1980, while also holding the single-season record for doubles, 15 in 1980, a record that still stands to this day. Whereas Pete ranks among the top five in numerous career statistical categories, including home runs, third with 80, RBIs, third with 484, hits, fifth with 558, and batting average, fourth with 336, reflecting his consistent excellence in the field, on the field. And whereas in 1974, Pete was named the BABA Grand Championship MVP. And beginnings in 1978, he took the, on the dual role of player and manager, guiding the Lakewood for an astounding 43 seasons until 2018, making him the leader for 56 years total. Whereas under Pete's leadership, the Lakewood captured 21 BABA South Central Division Championships and won 12 BABA Grand Championships out of 14 appearances, including a record-tying streak of five consecutive titles from 1976 to 1980, amassing an overall managerial record of 887 wins and 488 losses, a 645 winning percentage. And whereas Pete's legacy extends beyond sports to civic leadership, where his years on the Wapaka City Council have been marked by integrity and deep commitment to the betterment of our community. And whereas the City of Wapaka seeks to honor Dave Peterson's lifetime of contributions to the city, its institutions, and its people in a lasting and meaningful way. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the City of Wapaka hereby authorizes the official renaming of Harriet Street to Peterson Street in tribute to the extraordinary public service, athletic achievement, and the community leadership of Dave Peterson. Be it further resolved that the appropriate signage and public notification shall be provided to commemorate this honor and ensure the generations to come recognize the legacy of Dave Peterson within the fabric of the city he so faithfully served. Speech. Yeah, pretty special. Dave, I don't know if you want to say anything or.
Well, you write it just like I wrote it. No, I really am humbled by this.
No, I, I really am humbled by this. It was great to see Cronk and Hobby get it, the award, honor, and to be just one of those is outstanding. I sure, certainly don't want it to be because I hit a homerun or a double or something. I do accept it based on the time I put in to help the community have recreation program, though, and keep, keep the adult amateur baseball going. So that is very appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. So, again, for us to go ahead and get this ball rolling, we would need to approve this resolution, which will allow us to get the, the street name changed, and get that all, and get the, the street signs ordered, and, and get them ready for the, for the old-timers game.
Motion to approve resolution fifteen seventy-six.
Second.
Motion by Hagel, or Dykstra, Dykstra, second by Nagel, that would approve this. Any further discussion? If not, Laurel, call or roll.
Dave Peterson.
Epstein.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Henry Velker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayu.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Corey Nagle.
Aye.
Ten, well, nine ayes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have resolution number fifteen seventy-seven. This is a compliance maintenance resolution. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. This starts on page seventeen of the packet. This is the C Mar, we call it, so Compliance Maintenance Resolution. This is a DNR requirement that we have to have our council, our governing body, resolve if there's any required maintenance at our treatment plant. If you looked closely at the resolution, you can see that we are requiring or requesting none. The actual report is just behind that, in that, once I get kind of explaining what this does, you will understand why we're requesting none. So basically, this is a report card in generic terms for our treatment plant. So it goes through all the parameters that we test, that we have to treat, and then how we're scored at the end of each section. So if you get points in a, in a section, it's kind of like golf, that's bad. So you want zero points, and if you get zero points, then you get an A. Why'd I have to make it so complicated one way or another, I'm not sure. But at the very end of the report, if we scroll ahead, you'll see that we got a four-point-oh in our score, which is the best. It's perfect. We've gotten that four-point-oh score since twenty eighteen, and just prior to that, we had a three-nine, which kind of broke the streak, so. So if we were to have some issues, and we had, we weren't grading well, we would have to resolve to make some sort of maintenance or change, or, or giant improvement. But since we're scoring out at four-point-oh again, there's no need to do that. So I guess what I'm needing from the council for our wastewater department and our treatment plant is to approve this resolution, basically saying no maintenance or action is needed at the treatment plant, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions, of Justin?
Move to approve resolution fifteen seventy-seven.
Second. Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve resolution number fifteen seventy-seven. This is a compliance maintenance resolution for the wastewater treatment plant. Any further discussion? Laurel, call or roll?
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Henry Velker.
Aye.
Paul Mayu.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carries.
All right, next up is license report number seventeen twenty-one. This is, the first one is the operator's license. Remember that they run on a fiscal year? That's why you're seeing so many bartenders applying, they're reapplying for their, and there's a few new ones in here. Barb did highlight that these do, these are, you're approving them pending some background checks, which have already been done, but there are a few that, that owe some money. They will not be able to get their, their license until they, they pay any money that they still owe the city. But there's only a couple of those, and she's on track to get those. So, again, we are just looking for an approval of license report number seventeen twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry, Hagan, to approve license report number seventeen twenty-one. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Same thing here, fiscal year July first through June thirtieth, are the liquor licenses. So you'll see, these are just the Class B and Class A liquor licenses for the places. I think this is pretty much a complete list of all the liquor licenses that we, it is a complete list of all the liquor and beer licenses that we have in our, in our city. We would be, again, you could see up in, in highlighted up there, we still need the police chief, and the fire chief, and the building inspector, and the health inspector to, to, to let us know if we actually give them the, their, their license. But those will be done in the next couple of weeks before June thirtieth, so. All right, we are looking for a motion to approve. License report number seventeen twenty-two.
Move to approve license report seventeen twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Pachatsky, second by Velker, approve license report number seventeen twenty-two. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have the arcade amusement device licenses. Again, these are on fiscal year, and you could see the places that have arcade and amusement device licenses. And so we'd be looking for a motion to approve. License report number seventeen twenty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Dykstra, that we approve license report number seventeen twenty-three. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I don't believe these gambling machines should be in our community, and I don't think they serve any particular useful purpose. As a matter of fact, I think they are a detrimental purpose, so I will be voting against this.
Yep. Any other discussion? All right, ready to vote?
I request a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Laurel, you want to call the roll?
Paul Hagan.
No.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Henry Velker.
Aye.
Paul Mayu.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
No.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
We have eight ayes, motion carries.
All right, next up, again, fiscal year license report number seventeen twenty-four, which is on page fifty of your packet. This is a scrap dealer's license. We have three that are, are within the city limits, and again, we are just looking for a motion to approve this license report number seventeen twenty-four.
Move to approve license report number seventeen twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve license report number seventeen twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, communications recommendations to the mayor. We do have, our next meeting, of course, is the seventeenth. Josh is our new city administrator. Actually, his first day is the sixteenth, so he'll be, he'll be at that meeting, and then Juliana's, hopefully, is gonna be the twenty-third, so that will be right after that. We are planning, sometimes we don't have a city council meeting in the first week in July because of where the fourth is. We do plan that we need to have that first meeting in July, so you'll have to plan that, and also city planning, we'll also have to have that city planning commission meeting in, in July, too. Sometimes, like I said, sometimes we, we miss those. I really don't have anything else tonight. Thank you, everybody. I, it's a little different tonight with people in different roles, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Justin, just for the benefit of the audience, you want to remind people what's gonna happen on Elm Street come Monday in all summer?
Absolutely. So our Elm Street road project will start Monday ninth. So the road will be shut down from Highway forty-nine or Harrison to Holbeck Street, or right next to the Foundry parking lot. It is no through traffic, but the people that live there can get to and from their houses. Work will get started. It'll probably go through at least September, depending on weather and work progress. And we talked about that quite a bit at, at our previous meetings. I think that's kind of the general.
It's, it's a pretty busy street, so I'd want to try to get it out with a bunch of the public.
Right, and we've, we've been in touch with the post office, the Foundry. I mean, we've made attempts to communicate and, and publish with the public. Josh Warner was gonna put something on Facebook this week, another alert, so.
Anybody else? Going for nine in a row tonight, so, keep going.
The Brewers or Hagan?
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, June seventeenth, six PM, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, we adjourned at six forty-two.